This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the October 12th, 2022, special work session on alleys to order at 6:30 PM. Go ahead and approve the agenda if there's no additions.
I move to approve the agenda.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And second by Councilor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Work session, public alleys discussion.
Stephanie, what was that you declared last time?
Yes, declare your potential conflict of interest if you live on a house that backs to one of...
I just want to make sure it's potential or conflict of interest.
Well, so it's potential because it could potentially impact you. It's actual when it 100% definitely will impact you.
Okay, I do have my potential on this discussion since I live on an alley.
Yeah, so when it's a potential, you can participate, you just have to declare.
Right.
You just have to say the verbiage. When it's actual, you declare and you cannot be a part of the conversation.
Yeah, I thought I did that before, but Scott seemed to reiterate that.
In this meeting too, also.
Yep.
So, everyone's got maps.
Oh, there's two.
So, I'm wondering, was Ben gonna try to make it today? He can't make it. I invited him, but...
So we're color-coded. I didn't see the color-coding chart.
Yeah, it's on the back page, middle page, and back page.
Oh, I see.
I got shot.
Cousins sent me from two quotes in three weeks, so, two weeks.
So, kind of interesting. On the next page, after the agenda, there's 10,500 feet of... I didn't realize there was that many. Thirty percent of our natural grass surface walkways.
So how many people are actually driving on them?
We don't know.
Well, if you minus the 30%.
Well, I think some of the grass ones, people do drive behind their properties to do stuff, but we don't have any way of tracking it.
Seventy-five hundred are estimated to be regularly driven on. The remaining are not used regularly.
Yeah.
What constitutes an alley?
They're 15 feet wide. They're already platted in the tax map.
Well, they're platted only 15. Those are only 15 feet.
Right.
This is...
Well, I think almost all of... You might find something narrower than that. The right of ways 15 feet.
Yeah.
So that's a distinction between a city street and the 2025.
Yeah, most of the city streets are 60. There are a few weird ones that are different.
Yeah.
Or platters.
So they're distinctively platted.
Different.
Yeah.
Well, it's gotta be wider than 15 feet because I've seen survey markers.
No, it's 15.
That one behind my house is 15.
From property line to property line. It may be that people have surfaces that make it drivable wider than that, but if they put up a fence on their property line, and you did, it would be 15 feet in between them.
Yeah, because I've seen the pins my side and the other side. I thought it was 20 or something.
No. So, as you can see, we have a lot of square footage and the streets budget typically doesn't bring in enough money to do roads and alleys. That's been the current status.
Our state grants to do alleys?
If they were part of like a connectivity thing and you could make the case to fit their criteria, perhaps. But they're not gonna want you to pave. When you have, I think if all our roads were in good condition and paved condition, it'd be one thing to say, hey, now we're working on these other things that are drivable surfaces, but
Yeah.
without with big potholes and worse gravel, not a good sell, you could always try, but you might lose the grant.
Would you... So we know on the OA Hill ones specifically, because of the steepness of those, they're gonna take some drainage, special drainage
Sure.
be installed. If we were to go ahead and if the city was gonna bring those back up to snuff, we would want to put in the infrastructure. Now, would the state grant pay for any of that?
No.
Okay.
That's all stuff we do on our own, even with the state grant.
Would our storm drainage SDC pay for that?
Yeah, if you were like putting in pipe where nothing existed, increasing the capacity of the ditch, it'd be a hard sell if you didn't do any upsizing. Like if the ditch stays four inches, it'd be hard to sell them on, you're gonna pay for this pipe as part of it when this already existed as a natural ditch, but if you want six inches, then you're increasing capacity, right?
But would we be putting in potentially maybe a pipe right down the center of the street and do those collector boxes?
Yeah, are you meaning like the cattle ones that runs? Yeah.
Yeah.
I forget what those are called, but yeah, I know what you're talking about. Like the little grates that are channeling.
Yeah, like the one here by the library.
Catch patient.
Well, it's like, yeah, it's like a channel grate. There's that library as the water rolls down that hill, it gets collected there and then shoots off to the two sides. So they're kind of like a metal grate. It's just a metal piece that's inset.
Right, along with a pipe right underneath the crown.
Right, that would just keep flowing like a water.
Like take JR's alley and back this house.
It'd probably go down to the hammerhead and go to the ditch or...
Yeah, and end up in the ditch by Winning Stads and then going back towards the Jehovah's Witness on that uphill side of the street.
Do we have any idea what that, the cost of that would be?
No, because really to do it right, you'd probably have to have somebody draw up the project, like a professional.
Trying to figure out what the cost would be to... I came in there the other day after the council meeting, talked to Ben about, in fact, I went up and looked at the water leak and tried to figure out where it's coming from, and we've already discovered leaking into his pot. So anyway, I came down and talked to Ben about the three alleys up there, and we counted, he pulled it up on his screen, we counted 43 residents that share all those three alleys. He's talking about somebody like kind of JR to instigate a neighborhood, what do you call it?
Improvement district.
Yeah, improvement district, where it's paid for by property taxes by the homeowners. It all goes into one pot. And then I'm just kind of wondering if they did something like that up there with those three alleys to improve them, what the cost would be and how long it would take for maybe, you know, five years, or it could be paid off by all the taxpayers, so...
There's either, there's two ways to do an improvement district. Either you put on the taxes or you go to, they'd all, so they'd all have to vote. That's the thing about an improvement district. So when we get a waiver of remonstrance, they lose their no vote. None of those homes that we're talking about are waived, so they'd all have to vote. 66% of them would have to vote in favor for it to be moving forward. You could do it where they pay you, pay into the pot if they just want to pay and not do the tax version, or you could do like a tax, a taxing district. So LIVs could be either or. They can be like a cash, everyone pays $1,000 and you do it and it's over with, or if it's a lot of money, then they're a taxing district. That's how those work.
Does that seem to work well?
We've never done one. Other towns do them, but we've never had one. Ultimately, that's what we'll end up having on Louisiana when we go to do it, is we'll call in those waivers, form that improvement district, the areas that, where we have waivers and then move on.
So, looking at that situation up there and alleys in general, those on OA Hill, and I'm only talking the two first ones.
Yeah, there is one on...
There's one all the way back to the city line there. But those first two are distinctively different than the other alleys in town, in that they were purposely built to provide access to the homes and provide the off-street parking, or the access to the parking for most of those homes. I would, I would venture to guess the homes on each one of those, it's probably 60, 70% of those homes, that is where they go to park vehicles is in there, whereas most of the other alleys in town don't function like that. To me, that's a distinction that I think needs to be recognized. I drove them all the day, and then like I said, the one on the north line, mainly gravel. You don't, people haven't built, they're mainly parking on the front side, other than maybe the last couple homes on the bottom end. Which again, because of the steepness of the top ends, actually, I was looking at the map on the grading, I was like, man, I graded that good? Or what, you know, it is on top. It's just the bottom section where you got gradient that we, a gravel road will hold.
Because the neighbors have been maintaining it.
And they probably, yeah, they probably have.
Well, there's no ditching once it hits...
Well, there is a ditch on that street. On your other two, there's no ditching.
And then it gets up there toward, really starts to drop off, and it just gets right in the middle of the road and just runs down like, it's like two rivers. You could swear you could go fishing once raining hard. I mean, it's running this deep, and it looks brown all the way across, like you're waiting for salmon to come up, and then it shoots down, crosses Texas, and goes right into that guy's garage, and he comes in here and complains about every few years about it. And so there's no ditching, that's one thing. It's all slumped off. It should be on the...
And how would you ditch on that alley when people are parking on, I mean, you'd have to have...
It gets the fence away from my house. There's room for a ditch. It's just all filled in over the years, you know. So there's no ditching, that's one thing. And then as a homeowner, I can say, well, why did the city take possession of it and pave it when it was paved? And then they come in, chewed up the pavement, put chip seal down, didn't address the stormwater that runs underneath there, and then in two years, it was garbage from log trucks that are allowed to drive up and down it. So there's no provision for, hey, we don't let log trucks go up alleys or side streets or weight limits or anything. And then, so the city, to me, took over that, improved it, and then let it go to hell and just ignored it. That's from a homeowner's perspective. I don't know, you weren't here, obviously, making those decisions, but...
Well, I would, the other one that I would say also fits this is the Alabama, because Richard, David, Margaret Wells, all those people park on the Alabama one, this one.
Because the garage is...
You're correct.
Doors to the alley.
So there's actually three that have that parking thing.
And to those points where it's flat like that, we could, we could do chip seal.
Right, way easier fix, definitely.
But where we get into the steep gradients like that, it needs to be paved, and if you're going to do that correctly, I don't think you can chip seal. I mean, maybe if you, I don't know, we'd have to talk, have the water off of it, maybe.
Right, and maybe if you did a thick enough pass or a thick enough layer, too.
You can keep the water off it, like you said.
That's the biggest issue. It could be gravel if the water was, if their alley sloped and all the water went to one side, it probably wouldn't tear it up, you know.
Either the ditch or just digging.
Both you and Josette mentioned parking. The last two or three years, I drive my school bus, I turn up Texas, take a left on Mississippi, come back down Arkansas. There, I don't know if more people are buying these vehicles, but there's abundance of cars parked on the city street 24/7.
I've seen that.
And it's really hard sometimes for me to not take off my mirror, or I have to yield right away a lot of times coming down Arkansas. Well, Mississippi, too.
They park completely on the asphalt, two big trucks.
Yes, pickups.
Yeah, the one behind you, I've seen that today.
And I could just barely get my bus, buy them, you know, it's...
Well, the problem too is though, Rick, is that Mississippi and Arkansas aren't fully built out to their width either. So like in front of JR's where you have that kind of ditch that comes down and from Winning Stads, that could be usable space, but it really isn't. So they're kind of having to juxtapose where they're...
Which these landowners could hire somebody to go in and cut them out and gravel a parking spot in.
Yeah.
To that, pointing to that truck that parked right in the middle of the street there.
Yeah.
They got a fence there and everything.
Well, take the fence out, put some parking in.
Yeah, I don't know why. I don't think we have parking rules in this city, do we?
Well, you can't park in the roadway.
Yeah. You have to be on the shoulder, right, what exists, and I guess depending on how much trouble it caused others, you could probably get kicked out of that.
I didn't know that was a regular occurrence. I was like, you can't park on a bit of the road like this.
I go down that in the morning, so I go up and on, so it's pretty much every day.
Yeah.
So, separate issues, but again, you know, if these alleyways, I mean, somehow they're gonna have to get fixed, because if they get impassable, then people are gonna try to stuff their vehicles on the other streets and we're gonna have a mess. I don't know, I just, I think those alleyways up there, and it's kind of interesting that, Donnie, they actually have names affixed, street names affixed to them.
Yes.
I think that's a distinction that we don't usually see on any alleyways.
Those are 20 feet. Oh, it is. Those ones are 20.
20?
Based on my map.
What are, what are the other alleys?
Did you pull up the tax map, though? Because that'll tell you. That's what I always pull up. What are the other ones?
Yeah.
For the most part, they're supposed to be platted at 15. Like the one up First behind Seagulls is 15.
Yeah.
And that one seems to work. Those people do park behind. A number of people up here on this side of First, they have an alley behind Mike Seagulls and...
And where they're flat, gravel works. What'd you say?
The ones by JR, OA Hill is 20. The rest, the most, the rest are 15.
So I was right. This was quite a bit wider because there's the fence, and then I'm way over here. You can still see there's water running down, I guess from the leak.
Yeah, I figured the road bed was about 15 and it looked bigger to property line.
It used to be asphalt, or, you know, and it was kind of rough. They chewed up the asphalt and immediately recycled it into that chip seal. The same machine kind of chewed it up.
Mixed it with tar or something.
Mixed it with tar, and you can see it, there's a tar stripe on my apron, and I don't know how long ago. I'm thinking, you know, time flies. It was probably 25 years, 20 years ago.
2001 and 2002.
2001, they paved it?
When they chip sealed.
Chip sealed it, I mean, yeah.
That's when they approved it, so sometime in 2002.
21 years ago.
Yeah.
It was interesting because I found the road report from back then when they identified the improvement. Most of them are ones that we have recently repaved.
Yeah.
In these alleys. So they're all around the same age. We're getting about 20 years out of it.
They took out that million-dollar loan and then came in and, remember?
Yeah.
So that's probably it.
And chip sealed everywhere.
Yep, most of it was chip sealed and then some piece.
I don't know, I just, there's some distinctions that I'm seeing. What alleyway on the far north, is it a 20, or is it only a 15?
Pull up your tax map.
So between that and the way those houses were designed to begin with, it just seems to me that's, that is the function of those quote alleys, but I think there is...
You look at the pictures, all the, all the garages were there.
Yeah.
So the tricky part is, if you find a distinction, how do you pay for it?
Well, that's why I asked, that's why I asked the questions about funding there, and yeah, it is a big if, you know, who that's gonna...
Well, and since we already paved, well, and I don't know that it will, because Texas, unless we did like a safe routes to schools for the city part of Texas, there's, we've just paved Arkansas. We paved the upper, you know, the Louisiana, so we're like out of, we don't have a dilapidated street to be like, hey, this is our project and these are the add-ons. Does that make sense? I think that's where it'd be a hard sell unless we have some more tying.
Texas is pretty crappy, but you don't want to do Texas because it hits the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not yet. Maybe not.
But again, we really won't know till we try.
I know, but this is the thing. Knowing that none of these are on your current streets report, there are ones that are dilapidated, are you gonna risk a grant and not get it?
Well...
Because they could deny, they could deny the city if we put forward an application that doesn't, to them, meet their criteria, and then we're out another 250,000 when we have projects.
Thought Angie said they only ax out certain things. They don't ax the whole grant. They just, they don't accept certain elements.
No, we've been, when you get denied, you get wholly denied, and it's not a for sure. And especially now because they've bumped up the amount, there's, it's more competitive. So that's, you want to have a project that meets their criteria so they have no reason not to fund you.
So we talked in the past because of not knowing what the prices are gonna be on the bids, that we should always oversubscribe our streets some?
In the project. We always pitch more project than there is money.
So, so then we can...
Pitch that and then...
Pitch these as extra.
But it would have to meet the criteria. That's what I'm saying.
They couldn't figure it out there.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's risky if you're, I mean, the first thing we could do is kind of get, you know, council could approve so much out of contract services to do an investigative kind of pricing bid idea to move it forward, if that's what you guys are interested in, and just get kind of a ballpark, hey, this is phase one of fixing this problem and the drainage and the connectivity. The other kind of tricky part that I think everyone just says, oh, it's not gonna be a big deal. All of the approaches are in probably not the same level where, what people have done after they come off the alley. So you're gonna, that's also another thing to take into account. How are you gonna, are you stopping right there and then it's on the person? Because if you pave it and they don't do anything and they just break the hell out of the edge of that pavement, it's gotta be all kind of inclusive.
Well, even on our streets, so we go in and put the rock in.
We do, right, so we'd have to...
We'd have to do that.
Yeah, but there's like, here, here when we paved, we, we're way above them, and that's a problem because rock isn't cutting it, right? We're too, the steep, too steep.
I was about ready to get 10 yards darker and just fill in the ruts. Let it run. It's a point where I'm worried I'm gonna rip off, people have ripped off parts there for 20 years. That's all the...
So is it mostly gravel behind you, JR?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, it's worn down to the pit run.
Okay.
And the, and the, where it's, right now is the best it's gonna look.
Got like a crust on it?
Well, we wore it down trying to drive on it, but as soon as it rains, it'll hog it out and it'll be this deep from the crown.
It'll be like locker.
If you don't drive just perfect on it, there goes your, underneath your car.
I'd take my car on his alley.
And I don't really have a choice. I mean...
I took my car on it, but my car's got a lot of clearance.
I went out there with a pressure washer for, I don't know, four or six hours and tried to take the crown off just so my wife could back cross it to get out of the garage.
It's bad.
And it's just the water keeps just, if you go put rock there, which the city has put a little bit of rock up there because it pushes down, they push it back up once in a while, and then as soon as a good rainstorm hits.
It's gone.
It washes down across Texas and into that guy's garage and into those two ditches, because the water, it needs to be diverted just up there, a house or two above mine, over slope it to one side of the ditch and keep it in one side, because it gets right in the middle of there and then it runs down the ruts, like rivers. I mean, like rivers.
So, I'm trying to wrap my head around this argument. These are 20-foot right of ways. Kind of old-school street to me. How would, if, if these were, say, streets, then we could, they'd qualify and the grant, you'd have to be able to pave all your streets eventually.
Yeah, but you have to meet their, like, criteria. So there's gonna be no pedestrian on this, which is something they're really hounding on us and wanting connectivity for walkers, bikers, people.
Kids walk down all the time.
No, I know, but there's no...
Fall down, doc.
Pedestrian pathways.
He fell down.
Yeah.
Lately have been kind of hinging, and it's gonna morph. I mean, it's not always gonna be that set of criteria, right? The state's gonna say, oh, this is important now, and then we're gonna have to try and match that, but...
Well, it's critical fire access.
Could be. I don't, I don't know if the fire department...
I'm surprised they aren't here at the table, because actually for fire truck...
Well, if we get them here at the table, they'll want all of them.
Well, not necessarily, because...
I don't know, they, they want them on the flat.
Because they turn into impassable because of the roughness, because of the surface condition and the weather.
Yeah.
These flat gravel alleyways, they just sit there.
Yeah, but like the dirt ones, probably.
Yeah.
They'd want you to do, I'm just, they may want us to do something.
And again, I've worked, the city's obligation on these alleys, they're our right of ways, but you know...
They are, but the bigger...
Every 20 years, run a grader down there.
Maybe.
The mountains, cities do all their alleys twice a year, they're grading twice a year, and other than that, it's up to the people if they want to improve it further than that.
Yeah, those cities probably have a grader in their equipment inventory, not renting it or borrowing it or...
They're up in Canada. There's probably a lot of gravel, but...
Question, maybe, and I, I think Stephanie could probably answer this. Looking at the long term, say we do a UGB swap and annex the boot into the city, would we put an access down Texas to, to reach that and cut through there?
Probably all up to private developers.
Good question, though, wasn't it?
It's all up to private developers. They would have to do that, and they would have to build it to the city standard where it would be dedicated as a public right of way.
But it possibly might happen some in 10 years.
Yeah, it'd probably be Oregon.
That whole thing behind the school.
Yeah, it'd probably end up being Oregon more than Texas. It'd be different.
Oregon's pretty well opened up already.
Yeah, it's, it's, could become a road without, where Texas runs into private property.
Yeah.
Little bit different, but close.
Did you have to a developer to figure that out?
Yeah, never mind then.
Yeah.
It was...
Solid idea, but it'd be up to private.
So anyway, the reason I brought it up, because as a homeowner, I just need to know what the policy is. I'm not, I don't, I'm not down here calling for asphalt and the millions of dollars. I'd be happy with some ditching and some bigger gravel or don't have, I can actually drive up and down it with a car halfway, but the policy is I can't go out there and just go get a little track hoe and go to town on it because it's not my street, right?
Right.
And without the water being taken care of, the ditching, you know...
Well, you could probably write on your...
Mine, too.
You can't make home to the center of that.
The city doesn't want one, then I could just offer a vacant, just be my property and do with it, or...
Oh, we'd never vacate.
Yeah.
Because, just because of all of the...
And I could, all those homeowners, and there's, you know, to go for a district, when a lot of them don't have the issue I have, they'll say, well, that's just down there on the steep spot. That's three or four of you.
So that's what I'm wondering. Maybe council just decides to do a not-to-exceed amount and have an investigation of getting us real phase one fixed bid estimate.
Yeah.
You know, like, what will it take to make this passable? Maybe it's a first phase that makes it passable, but it's not the final, and then we put in money in the budgets to address it until it's golden. I don't know.
Well, those two alleyways that are trying to quote special, under today's... Under today's dollar was about 50 grand to pay them. It's about, it's less than 1,400 feet.
Oh.
And you know, foot wide, so 49K. So.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's the water issue, but if we can use SDCs for some of that, well, that'll, I mean, that cuts the bill down. So.
Yeah.
And maybe we call them Alabama and what was the other one?
Oregon.
Oregon says it's Oregon. Oregon goes up in terms.
I always thought it used to be East Oregon on a map. Is that what it says?
Well, it said Oregon on my Onyx.
On the alley?
Yeah.
I've seen that before somewhere and then that's.
What's the condition of this one that comes down through where Doc?
It's on the next one.
What is?
Big one.
Oh, that's excellent.
Yes.
It's, oh, no, 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 excuse me. Now that's, that's poor. Blue is poor. It's got some.
Poor, yeah, but.
That's behind McLaughlin and.
And that comes down where?
Yeah.
Where Alabama is.
That's Alabama.
Dalton.
Yeah.
Doc. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's crappy.
That's just as bad as JR's. I haven't driven down.
Pretty much.
It's, it doesn't have the slope. It doesn't have the slope, but it has the surface condition.
Yeah, I would trade them.
And most of O A Hill that's going to the.
Yeah, yours.
Uses that.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that use that as a go home or get out.
About this.
The little weird spot in between right here. This blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lot of parking.
Yeah.
That's pretty rough too. Big potholes in it.
What's still partially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, it's pretty rough.
I don't see, I don't think there's been any maintenance done.
There's three, no, there's three pages.
And the first page doesn't have the condition. Little cut through.
Oh, that little cut through shrug.
Yeah.
This one.
Firsthand knowledge.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're that now.
Guess I shouldn't have driven it. Okay.
Yeah.
And technically, you know, the alleyway that's the most. Probably is where the kids probably walk to school.
And it's washing out on the downside because on that bottom ditch or culvert has plugged up or something. It's over jumped and ran down.
And that's part of our issue is we're not staying up on our ditching in there.
It's really on the homeowner. It does clear the vegetation out.
Yeah, but it's.
It does that every year and the neighbors clean it out and they grade the roads every year. But if you're going to do the other two alleys, gotta be ready to.
Well, that's it. And that's it. I mean, what are we sitting here? Like I said, you know, it's once every 20 years running a grader on some of these alleyways through town. Is that? Our obligation to the citizens or?
Right.
Or not? And I mean, the citizens should keep them, um, cluttered brush and grass and.
Yeah.
Which they're not, but.
No, we've even caught people that are just like go to the alley and then you'll see them like shake out their grass.
Yeah.
Clippings and then there's a big pile along their fence and you're like, okay. That's not the compost pile, but.
Yeah, I, I kind of like what Josie, I mean, we investigate what the costs are going to be to do this and then I don't know. I mean, I'm real hesitant to. Take a risk on grant funding, but. Now they offered, opened it up to a quarter of a mil. It's.
Well, and that's the thing, maybe, maybe you do the grading and the prep work and the storm yourself. And then you piggyback when you've mobilized an asphalt unit, you use some of this funds and streets to do that project separate from your winnable grant.
Which is doable because I mean.
I mean, we were talking.
Normally we accumulate 25 grand minimum in there a year, some years 30.
Right.
Depending on the winter, snow removal cost.
Right.
So you, you know, two years, you could get the paving for those two alleyways. And then if we could use the SDCs to get the storm drainage in.
What about SDCs for the street?
Well, you're not really increasing the capacity.
If you do more than gravel.
But you're still, you're not like adding, you're just changing the surface.
Yeah.
It'd be like recoating a swing set instead of like, yeah. I mean, I think you could risk it, but you don't want to pay it. You don't want to get caught having to put it back.
So I mean, that's a fallback strategy and not having to risk grant funding. But it is curious that they're wider and they're showing up with street names on it. It's almost like we could go.
The Platts don't have street names.
But there's Platts.
I remember at one point the north one had North Street, but I don't remember where I saw that.
And well, and that, that kind of lines up exactly with north. It's not like a weird.
The bottom one from Texas. By the way, that one was identified as Alabama. But I'd have to look and see where, where the street names will be recorded.
Someone thinks.
Someone's calling City Hall, leaving a mad message or something.
But regardless, it's.
Yeah.
So as in for your pricing, Josette, are you thinking of the engineer doing something or a contractor coming and giving us a wild guess?
Well, I think we could just, just discuss it with our engineer of like, what would you say the first step is to remedying this? And then we, yeah, we either get them to kind of say, write out a little work, scope of work. And then we ask different contractors for bids on it and that's one way to do it.
And again, if we get the water off the street. Chip seal might work, but I don't know. Again, I think that's an engineer.
Well, or even, you know.
I mean, on them, on the steep portions of it, I mean, up on top is fairly.
There's nothing wrong with gravel. I don't think.
Well, the only trouble is with the drainage. You had, your gravel would run into your drainage and probably plug you up. If you slope it, it keeps the water from running down the street. It's going to help 99%. And if you pave it, then you're sliding down in the snow or can't get up it. It's slicker than hell.
Sorry.
The other thing that worries me a little, which I think engineering, what worries me about the kind of waterfall effect is if you get a flash flood event and that channel gets full. It's just doing that down the street anyway. Does that make sense? You get enough water flowing in that channel, depending on how big you make the channel.
Yeah.
And you're going to, it's going to overflow it and go, keep going.
It's all in the design.
Yeah, it is. But that's why I'm saying whatever they design might be expensive for that versus a slope and a ditch line. And then dealing with people's access points with the culvert underneath their access point. So it means if we.
Yeah, we can look at it two different ways.
Yeah. So there's some.
Trouble is ditches on steep slopes, they're just going to tear themselves up. They're going to dig. They hit sauce, they divert into the road bed.
Yeah, but you could do something with some sort of created corrugated buried pipe too, where it hits that slope. And then it gets dragged out too. And, and so then you're not worrying so much about it being like an open ditch as you're worrying, you know, you get some drain rock on the top and it takes it, diverts it. But it's all in the design, not on the engineer.
We're designing this.
So I guess a wild guess thought I had is the road could slope to the middle.
Yep.
Pipe down the middle. Every so far have a two foot by two foot catch basin. And that would, everybody's water would run off their property down into the catch basin and.
Yeah.
Kind of how they do it in Arizona, I think.
For the flash events. Yeah.
They do the streets.
Little narrow alleys. I've seen that where there's like a concrete strip and then asphalt. I think the edges are like concrete and then they asphalt it to a drain in the middle.
Well, and you could even do it, a concrete band or something and then gravel. Like Angie's did runners upper driveway because it was so steep. It's just runners and gravel everywhere else. They drive on the runner.
I think this one's steep enough.
You'd want to.
Gravel in the middle is going to wash out.
Yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying. You'd want the gravel on the outside of this one and then some sort of channel.
If there was some catch basins in the center. To stop the water being so heavily traveled past JR's.
Yeah.
Would make a big difference on the mound or the block that, block that got washed down.
You, you just, you, you're diminishing the flow. You're capturing it.
Yes.
Then, because it takes a volume to cut. You know, you go a hundred feet and you only get so much rainfall on that and then it's down the pipe.
Well, the other thing you could do is like we did on Cherry, which it's paved up there. We just did an asphalt berm that divert, the water flows down, hits that and then just goes out to the ditch.
And yeah, we could do a diagonal speed bump.
That's what, that's what it is on Cherry because it was coming straight down the middle and then go into the low spots of this guy's driveway. So we just went up where it was cutting him and just cut it the other way right into the culvert. And it seems to work. It's worked for three winters now. And that's easy because that's something they can just go rebuild up with cold patch when it starts to get ground out. But yeah, I mean, if you guys are interested, we can, Robert's coming tomorrow. I can chat with them about kind of setting up a time to. Give us a little information or help us talk through it and see maybe just a small scope of work or something. So we can get some people with the right equipment to.
Well, do we kind of need to develop the alley policy?
Well, we talked about.
Do something in a resolution.
Whatever, whatever you guys come up with, we need to get it into the street's transportation plan.
Okay.
So that future councils know.
Right.
This is the expectation. This is how we deal with this size, this size, this size. And then it just gets in the bigger streets plan over time.
Cause well, I guess we are still building alleys, aren't we? I forgot about that.
Yeah, we still have alleys.
They're on the, the new development's got an alley in between and that's kind of steep.
Well, and what's interesting is up there, all the infrastructure comes into the alley.
Yeah.
So the city's got a little more reason to keep it maintainable and grade it because you're going to want to access your stuff.
None of their parking's from the alley too, I noticed.
But they're, are they up there?
No, it's backyards.
No, it's, it's, their houses are all built for parking. Rides are on front side.
Yeah. You have to have a right.
So that's the big distinction. That and width on these two. Okay.
And we can have, we can have Ben double check that none of the others fit that because if we're going to use that as, as a delineation, we want to make sure it's not, oh crap, this one's also 20 and yeah.
I think it's got, it's got the three elements. Over 50% of the houses on those are using alleys for park, that's how they access to parking. It's the 20 foot width. And steep gradients.
Yeah.
That causes erosion. Those, those.
I think the width and the grade for sure. I think that using usage is a sketchy thing. Because then these people could just be like, oh, we'll just start using it. So I would, I would say intent more than usage because it was built with the intent to be a primary access.
Well, or you could change your wording that the housing was developed in such a manner.
But then that's even, that's even a little sketch because there's a ton of these flat ones that used to have those garages in the back, but it's since torn down. So we got to be careful. I don't even know that you need an intent. You could just say it's the gradient and it's the width as a designator. And just leave the intent out of it because if these are 15 down here and they had the little buildings, I mean, there's a few that have the little shop and some guys parked their whatever back there.
But again, you know, if you had 55% or 60%, they, they don't meet that.
No, they.
Now, so, so you're saying you know, not you, you know, that there are multiple alleys in town that are used for access. So say First Avenue, the one behind, up by the lake, whatever that one is.
Yeah, that's a good one right there.
Um, Alabama, you're saying that they don't deserve to also have theirs maintained? Only the ones that back to a current city councillor?
No, I think he's saying that based on the width and the steep gradient, that maybe those have a level of surface treatment. Different from ones that are flat gradient, maybe flat gradient would be gravel, steep gradient would be some sort of paved or concrete, like.
But I argue that those ones that are flat are super easy to be maintained. So why wouldn't they also be included? If I was on one. I would be pretty upset if you guys chose just a couple because you thought that they deserve it and I didn't.
Well, see, and that's why I'm kind of talking about the usage because you, you bring up the point, right? The ones that go in behind Fred Ovea's home.
Yeah. Why don't they?
I mean, that was an alleyway, but those people have no parking in front.
Nope.
And, and I would agree with you that that probably should be probably chip sealed in the future.
Or even just graded.
Yeah.
Or graded, yeah.
Yeah, or the, or like Margaret Wells and Sterner on that Alabama, they don't have, anybody abutting the highway doesn't have, you know, doesn't have a driveway. That is their parking.
And, and some of that, I think from Texas to, Texas to Missouri was either paved or chip sealed.
Chip sealed and it's used as a road.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so.
Not just people.
So you know, how do we make that distinction from there? On the loop back out to the highway. So.
Yeah.
No, I agree. Those are meeting that criteria, but part of that criteria is. They have to use that to access their homes.
Yeah.
And, but those are, those are the limited ones. I mean, I mean, I guess we need to sit down and go, wow, widespread is this? But I don't think it is. This side of town really got treated totally different how they put the alleys in and built to them. They built to the streets.
Yeah.
And downtown built to the streets.
Wow, well, it's all in. Oh, you know, that's private.
All in.
Is it? Click on it. I think it's S.
No.
I think part of it's S, part of it's all in.
Living on it.
But I mean, I'm complaining for.
Yeah, I think part of it's the subway parking lot, but then there is a weird.
It's all an alley.
It's what?
But it goes.
Alley.
All an alley.
15 or 20. Okay.
And it goes from, from behind the cherry tree. We used to be cherry tree apartments, almost cleared out where West Oregon had their lot.
Oh yeah, it goes the full way from Maple to the highway.
Yes.
And then it even goes further down behind.
It's 15.
15.
But you're, you're, we're splitting hairs.
Right.
We know that there's really not that many in town. The biggest ones, the biggest expense will be the O A Hill. But in excluding everyone else, we're saying you're not good enough. We only care about these select people of which one of them is a current city councillor.
Well, why, where you, how are you reading or excluding those? Cause we talked about doing out of the alley down by Sterner.
Yeah.
And me.
What about First Street? What about Ernie's? But we're saying that, that meets three criterias. One, over 50% of people use it. Two, it's, what was the other one?
Like it's.
Three. It's.
Criteria.
Twenty feet wide. So we're saying, we're only, we only care about the ones who meet this criteria, the ones who use it, which will, let's say. Just a small handful. We don't really care about yours.
I think you make distinctions. I mean, we make a distinction on who gets a paved street and who gets chip sealed. And it's criteria is, is to how much traffic is going to be on it.
Right, right. Does that feature development?
You know, I mean, that's kind.
Well, and I don't think, I think we're not, I think you're not saying we aren't going to, we aren't going to do Fred Ovea's.
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Some aspect.
Reminder, I've seen that on the map and go, well, if we're going to do this, that deserves to have something too. And I don't know why we wouldn't.
Just maintain in it, like the gravel ones are gravel. We'll grade them.
Yeah.
We understand those ones will pull up to local traffic. That's just gravel. But these ones, I'm not arguing to say they also need paved or whatever. That's unnecessary. What I'm saying is we want to make, I feel like we need to make sure that we don't exclude some sort of maintenance of all the alleys that are used for access.
Right.
I'm not talking about grass or dirt. And only doing this group. I understand it'll be much like the street plan where it's okay, necessary need and the condition. But we're still grading all the streets. All the streets are worthy. We are just going from the bottom where they're in worse condition.
Yeah. And I think those ones up there, we could say just that. We're starting at the bottom. This is our make, we're going to maintain to some drivable level and we're starting with the poorest.
Can I offer a historic? View back in time and you're, you're going to understand this. Donny's going to understand what I'm talking about.
JR knows construction. I, I built.
I, I built roads for Crowns Dollar Back when I first started with them. I know what it, I know what we did, I know what it takes, I know what you end up with. And I know those alleyways were built by D six and they, they, they cut it out. They hauled pit run in from Oak Ranch Pit or probably. And then they put a layer of crust on it, they walked it down, beat it down with their cat. Then they put a layer of crust over it. And it, and the problem is, I mean, it was a good road, they ditched it and, and probably access to the garages, they put culverts in. And they had a ditch on one side, I'm sure. That's what they did and they, they lasted for a long time and they held up good. But over a period of decades, they haven't been maintained and, and waters washed all the gravel away. And, you know, I think you go back to the basics and, and tearing it up and redoing it just like it was built. And, and, and put a culvert in each access in, in J R's garage and property and, and so the water properly drains and you go back to basics. And how much does that cost?
Probably pennies.
And, and every other year you have Steve Heemian come in and track spread the, the track. And, and there you go. It's simple.
Well, if you think seventy years ago, how many houses had six cars?
Right, that's the other thing.
Huge trucks.
And traveled as fast as they do now.
Right.
They're used completely different.
Yes. Cause I took a little drive around Pebble Creek, McDonald and Model A and about the time I got from the Chinese joint to McDonald Road, I'm good. Now I really understand why the old timers didn't travel that far.
Your back's broken.
Well, you're driving and you just don't drive like the cars do.
Yeah, there's no suspension.
Yeah, and you're lucky if you get up to thirty-five, you know?
Yeah.
So, but I think in some other alternative factors that have happened in there is, I see it all the time that a lot of people either bring more rock or more dirt in, but nobody takes any out. And before you know it, they've taken their driveway or approach and got it higher than the garage and the water's running the grove. So I think over time, a lot of those people dug the houses out, put foundations under them and they put all the dirt next to the street too. And different runoff of different things have filled the ditches up and nobody's dug them back out.
Oh, that's the problem.
And then the road has kind of sunk and everything's higher. So if we could get ditches and culverts in, that would make a big improvement. But doing that without stirring up all the neighbors.
Yeah.
But I guess if we made a fifteen foot road and used the rest on each side for ditches, they couldn't say nothing.
Yeah, because you got twenty.
It's all, it's in your, it's all within our right of way.
Right.
Have it one way.
Well, no, if you did fifteen and like two and a half on each side for.
So there's no written policy about alleys, right? It's just kind of tribal knowledge. So I'm just trying to see if we can come up with something in writing or if homeowners like, or anybody else is just going to go out there and do what they want to be able to use it or that's what's been going on already.
When you can, I mean, you can technically with the right way permit. But if anybody's going to arrest you if you go out and fix a pothole.
No, I mean, there's some major stuff though, in some places need ditched down and.
The risk of doing that is that they hit infrastructure. So that's why I'm a big.
Yeah. Oh, you don't want to go tell everyone to go, how do you go start digging?
Get a track hoe and start.
Yeah.
I know.
It was a gas line.
Right.
Luckily the gas is out on Arkansas there.
But that's all addressed with a right of way permit.
Yeah. My, my wife says before I left, she's give, give, give them hell down there. She's been pretty patient for thirty some years and, yeah, no. So like I say, I think we, we've got some distinctions that we can draw that not all these alleys are, they're not the same. They're definitely not the same. Especially where these people, primary access to their homes is through that river bed. That's, that to me is just huge.
Yeah, but I think you don't even have to distinctively do that. You can just go on condition. You can just say we're going to maintain, we're going to get it to something and.
You're right.
Start from the bottom up.
Get that D five cap back, you can hit all the alleys in two days. She would have turned me loose. I had a ripper on the back, I could have ripped it.
You'd have to rip the crown out of his alley.
Yeah, especially by his house, yeah.
Yeah, well, isn't there still some chip seal in there?
Probably.
Not by.
Just thick. I could go over there and peel it up by hand and then, then I got pit run under it and, you know, I go out there and pick it and ax it.
It mixed with the other aggregate.
Yeah.
So I guess another goofy thought I have is if the bed is halfway decent now, why don't we raise the road up so the water can't get on it?
That's what it needs, inch and a half rock and fill it in and it won't wash away or inch and a quarter. And at least get you through a year or two.
You still have to do ditching, otherwise you're just directing water into people's yards.
Yeah, because it goes down and it'll hit something, it'll dive in and it'll eat out a chunk.
Right.
You know, you've seen ditch lines.
Yes.
We have a torrent. Well, city has a city, it's not controlled. We have a city backhoe, don't we?
We do.
Got any operators for it?
I think we should, I really would like us to talk to someone that can give us either a scope of work to go to contractors with or develop some fix, however that looks, with some not to exceed amount that you guys are okay with spending on investigating it or something. Because I think we can come up with a thousand good options, but we got to have something that's replicatable for the city, for the future us to keep doing, pulling off.
So how much do you think?
I don't know. I was, that's why, I think I could ask Robert tomorrow and be like, what would it cost to just get a scope of work? What would it cost to get, have you go survey the area and look at it and?
See how much money we got left in that fund.
Well.
Day, Brady, Rams.
Yeah, uh, that'd be an Ange question on what the.
Even if it's an overtime project, at least we have a goal.
Yeah, yeah.
Trip away out of.
Who's a good road builder in our area, we could just go and talk to Dale.
Well, I think if they're going to bid the job, we don't want to talk to them ahead of time.
Nope.
Because then they get kicked out of bidding it. So that's why I'm saying you got to either get a scope of work that we can legit, take the three builders that we trust, we're thinking, go do a good job, get three bids on it. Or I don't want someone to give us advice and then they can't participate or get the job. That's my own.
Yeah.
Get right for themselves.
Yeah.
Whenever I try to find something out, I always go to somebody that knows a little.
Oh no, it works perfect in the private side. It just negates them and then someone could contest them.
I understand. I get it.
Well, it doesn't hurt to talk to.
Robert.
Robert and find out what he thinks and then you can bring us a proposal.
Yeah.
With a number and we can see what the streets and.
See what we got. But can I ask what designates an alley? Well, that's just.
Currently?
It's narrow.
Well, currently the way they're all lined out and platted, it's the narrow right behind.
You want to know a definition?
Just Google?
Yep.
Oh, go for it.
An alley means a superhighway intended to provide access to the rear or side of lots or buildings in urban districts and not intended for through vehicular traffic. Boom.
Access to the rear or.
Yeah, so basically how it's.
Those are failing valley tests because they are through traffic.
Yeah, but.
Intent, it's not intended to be a sort of, whether it is.
Probably the tent to get back and park in the garages.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, in old day, all those houses had the garage shop back.
Yeah, even like on the flats.
And that's why I think we're having the problem with all the parking out front is because they're not going up the alley. Yeah. Park them back and they're parking up front.
Right, or they built out and they've got like a trampoline in the yard, a barbecue pit, no spot for a shed.
So to that effect, you could say that if we start maintaining these even a tiny bit, it could save us money on actual street maintenance.
If they were willing to park behind there with their four cars or whatever. Yeah.
You've got to block the alley if it's only fifteen feet wide trying to park on them.
No, if people had like what you have, that's what we're saying. Someone could, down on North Street on the flats could take their fence out, build a little garage and use it just, and then never have to fight for parallel parking in front of their house.
I wish I lived on a flat. I could do that.
Yes.
Looks like Mr. Allen parks in the alley.
She's looking at the.
Oh, I know, there's like a car on the street on the aerial down at, at J R's. Looks like the maroon car. That's probably an old picture.
Oh, it's like nineteen or two thousand fifteen.
It wasn't in the alley. Wasn't. Probably high in the ride there or something, hung up.
It doesn't matter, so people can get by again.
Yeah, if you're on the shoulder.
Anyone. It's intent, you're trying.
Yeah. If your car's like this, then you're probably trying to get out of the way.
There's a street in St. John's, you go down toward Kelly Point Park and you loop around industrial route to come back to the bridge. It's where all the trucks go. It's like, it's kind of narrow. And they, one side, everybody parks up on the sidewalk with their truck and there's about a foot out in the street. And that's all over it and they let them do that. It's weird. It's the craziest thing you ever seen. The homeless camps, they park right in the middle of the street. But everybody else on one side, they're up on the planter, like one wheel on the sidewalk edge.
The heck?
Over the planter, one wheel out on the roof. Otherwise there's not room for cars to go. Yeah, trucks are used in through there.
Yeah.
It says no parking, but they still park like up on the sidewalk or part of the street. No enforcement on anything in Portland, so you know, you can do whatever you want.
So are we, am I done taking minutes or are we?
So yeah, I think the path forward is.
You're directing.
You could come back to the.
Talk to Robert, either get a scope of work or estimate for.
In the form of, uh, put it on some meeting on, in new business.
Yep.
Consensus of council.
So what are we going to do for a policy though?
Well, we're probably not until we kind of see what is it going to take to? Then you got to figure out, are we maintaining them all grade and gravel? Are we doing some with asphalt and then council have to write a policy that, you know, maybe it's a steepness or a slope over this percentage, we do asphalt, right? I mean, that'd be an easy way to.
It could be, yeah.
Or in below that, it's chip seal or gravel depending or.
It could be pretty easy to say it based on engineer's recommendation.
Yeah.
Another one up here on the hill that we would probably have to pave or do something with.
Which one's that?
Goes from second to third, right there below the Lincoln School. Because it washes out pretty good too.
Yeah, what is it? Is that an alleyway?
No, so that's.
I think that's a street.
It's actually not improved.
Or private?
Columbia, right? That's the one you're talking.
Second to third is.
What are you talking about?
It comes out right there by Dean, definitely.
Yes, the, the house that we're having problems with the manhole.
Yeah.
Where's that now?
It's Columbia.
It's Columbia.
It is Columbia. Okay. Yeah. By Mark Hall's house.
Right here.
Is it Mark and Debbie Hall live?
The other side.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's grass.
Yeah.
That part's grass.
But then just above it is like a weird.
There's an alley there?
No, it's actually Columbia.
It's actually a street.
Isn't it goes through?
Donny?
Yeah, Columbia does.
Old alleyway that. Where Joe and Jenny Dennis used to live?
Yeah.
Exactly. I know where, where you're talking.
It's not an alley, it's the street.
It's a street.
I wanted these to get hard service.
Yeah, and I've had a lot of calls from that lady.
I know we're paving streets now, last few years. I don't remember that ever going on before. Did they ever get the state funding and try to do what?
Yeah, we, well, before the state funding was fifty thousand dollars and you could only apply for it every other year. So we were, and then if you didn't get it in a year, then you were two years gap before you got it.
I'm talking twenty, thirty years ago.
Oh, I have no idea.
So.
I wasn't here.
Back about around two thousands when they went out, took that big, that loan, right?
Yes.
For a million dollars. And they went in town and they did chip seal and probably some paving everywhere.
A lot of the tree streets.
Tree street everywhere up my area, that's when Spencer and Alabama got it back then. And then they took the money that they got through that grant process to pay back on, was it through that?
I don't know what they did.
It was something, it was something about the money they were receiving paid off in that loan, but you forever pay it off or you couldn't do anything again.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if they did that or they took the grant work and they took the gas tax money to pay off the loan.
Probably.
Something like.
I don't know that you can get a grant to pay a loan.
No, usually they don't want to pay for something that's already happened, but it's probably, they probably filled the gap with the grant and paid with their money they already had.
So they were betting on getting a grant to pay the loan?
No. No, paying it with the gas tax. They were betting on the grant to do any.
Did we get a hundred and fifty thousand a year gas tax money?
Yeah, but it's got to do all the street, that's all that the street fund has coming into it. So any work in the streets.
Grand goes to lighting, so they come down.
Who did that?
Fifty.
Remember when we were talking about raising the gas tax?
Yes.
That was four years ago.
Twenty-six grand a year or so.
Yeah.
Imagine how much we'd have now.
We were only going to raise it like one point five pennies or something.
Yeah, something.
It wasn't worth it.
It would have taken a lot of effort.
Forty thousand dollars or something.
Citizens would have had pitchforks, torches.
The funny thing is, is nobody really knows. There's always gas taxing, I'm paying Hills Bros all the time when I'm over there getting gas.
Well, the alley town. It does.
Yeah, I got.
I'm paying, I would have broke the six dollar mark.
Right.
And the mini mart would be seven dollars and then people bitch on London, say it's because the city put taxes on it.
Right, not that, he's just.
Right.
High price. No, that's our dream is if we win the lottery, we're doing the hometown gas station.
There you go.
Where we're always a dollar cheaper than him and drinks are free or something, you know, like just put the old hometown in.
What's that town Randy Peril's from?
Uh, Doofur?
Doofur. That, uh, that big co-op in there, they run the gas station and they run the gas pretty much at cost. Really great benefit to the town.
Yeah, what's the?
I always hear how it's cost so much to ship stuff to Veronia.
I know.
Get on my motorcycle and get way out in the middle of nowhere and I have a hard time finding any even more expensive than Veronia.
Right.
It's like we're the highest in Oregon and Washington.
You go to really rural eastern Oregon, it's cheaper.
Yeah, it's weird.
Yeah, well, and it's funny because even Moala can be twenty cents cheaper than when you get on this other side of I F I. It's weird.
Yeah.
But I think Portland has an extra ten cents a gallon tax for the roads. So that's why they're higher.
They figured if you're dumb enough to buy an eight dollar cup of coffee, you can buy expensive gas too in the Northwest, I guess. I don't know. Someone just told me we were in Kansas the other day and it was like two eighty or three thirty.
Oh yeah, our friends came from New Jersey for Salmon Festival and they're paying three fifteen.
And they're shocked when they got here.
They're like, what the hell? Five fifteen, five sixty-nine.
National average is like three sixty-nine, still something like that.
So yeah, our travel to Pennsylvania, because we kind of went to Northway, all those states up there, you can get non-ethanol and regular premium. But as soon as we dropped down and come back around the south way, there was very rarely did you see non-ethanol.
Isn't that crazy?
And the price went up.
What's the national average?
I don't know. Look at my receipt today.
Thunderforest.
Yeah, it is. It's three something.
Three ninety-six.
Seventy-four ninety-two for twelve point seven gallons tonight. And I just put forty dollars in yesterday too.
It's going to get worse too.
That's just one day of work and then I put in that much again, so. I went through most of that forty bucks in just one trip to Portland and back, I guess. Making big bucks. Well, I don't know how most people could afford to do it. Well, the people that aren't making big bucks, this is really. I mean, it hurts me and I make probably more than the average guy, but I drive a long way. But I can't imagine driving to Hillsborough or Beaverton for twenty bucks an hour.
Oh no, my one brother-in-law, he's like, I can't come see you mom to Forest Grove from Portland because it's just going to cost him like, yeah. And he's like, I can't. So we're like, well, we'll bring her over that way and meet in the middle.
It's made me think about retiring cheaper than going to work. This made me think about retiring cheaper than going to work.
Monday, when I left town, it was six bucks here. Five sixty nine and Banks and I got a Cornelius for five thirty nine. Yeah. So.
We should start working for golf carts.
Time is almost as far out as we are and they're always drastically cheaper.
Yeah.
And people complain about them. Work is nice to me.
Well, it's not the nicest place looking, looking place in the world.
I don't care.
It was run by some pretty shady characters for a while and everybody, they'd go in, they'd make carbon copies of your credit card. They had the whole machine, so they had your numbers and then everybody's like, well, I'm getting double charged and now I'm buying stuff in Bangladesh and. Yeah, that was quite a few years ago.
I pay cash.
I usually try to go to the Quantrill Arco, but if I can't make.
That's the cheapest.
Time, yes.
All right.
Sounds like we have the consensus to.
We got it.
Talk to the engineer and then also sounds like council wanted to. Make us wait for this to come back, but then kind of sort out a policy on. Because right now we don't have.
I feel like it, it feels like we should be doing something if the homeowners can't do anything about it themselves. And the situation is dire. If we're saying you're not allowed to do it and we will never vacate it, then I, it, that feels like obligation.
I won't say obligation to do.
What? Yeah.
Yeah, so some sort of maintenance, yes.
The grade is a, on these are a big issue.
Yeah, so that's why I think we figure out what the plan would be for this, ones with the steeper. And kind of your policy be kind of a. Sliding scale of.
Condition.
Condition and requirement for maintenance depending, yeah.
I mean, some of these alleys, they never get used. I mean, what are we going to do for those? I mean, yeah, maybe every twenty years we come to a grater and.
Right.
Straighten her up, but that's it, you know, I mean, it's just.
They're either going to be unimproved or they're being.
I'd say put it on.
Condition.
Yeah.
It's obvious.
Yeah, that's a load of pit run and roll it in then crushed on top.
I think a lot of them, you just try to put a grater on, you're going to be at sod, there's going to turn everything up. You're going to do it to sod.
Yeah.
Full of rock.
Yeah.
Better off just leaving it alone, but.
Yeah, and again, if to condition, if it's not rough, if it's serving the need. If it's an access to back of my property to. Pick up bags of leaves and throw in the back of my pickup, then I can get in and out and fire department's fine with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to do anything, but if it's got a bunch of potholes you can't climb through. Yeah, we got to do some work, so. So maybe condition based, like you say, if we start rating them poor, passable.
Right.
Then we got to do something.
Right. Because you could drive a truck right behind Bruce's old house pretty much the whole way and you're not going to hit anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just grass and scrub brush.
From the Napa store.
I've read policies where, you guys can get online, different cities, different policies, but they're like, you have to maintain the alley free of vegetation. Keep the grass down. That's your responsibility, right?
Right.
And then they, they had, either some of them come in there. Twice a year and they grade them or they do nothing, or they want them built up to city specs before the city will take over. An alley or a street, you know, just like they do.
Well, and I think it's an easier sell if you go in there, like say you're doing the one behind. Uh, Napa or North Street or something, you go in there and do the first thing and then implement the policy. So that you've set it up so that.
Yeah.
You're not putting the onerous on the backs of all these kind of people that don't have a weed whacker, don't have a, you know. If they, you kind of set it up and then the maintenance is continued from there on, maybe you just go through there with the back hole and backblade it. Yeah. The ones that are vegetation, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, kind of scruff it up and level it out a little. I mean, and if we're, you know, dump a load of rock and there's track spreading some rock in there.
Yeah.
Every twenty years.
I just bought a load of crushed and put it over inch and a half and man, it's a. Really, and it was actually the crushed rock was pretty clean, but man, did it pack in.
What'd that load cost?
I bought fifteen ton.
Fifteen ton?
Thirty, thirty ton. It was. One load, I paid three hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah.
Well, that hasn't gone up to.
Who brought it?
Steve, well.
So is it a twelve yard?
Yeah, yeah.
Thirteen.
He, he can get, he's got a drop ax, so.
Yeah.
We can haul more and see. But I paid.
Seven or four maybe unit.
So, but it's nice, firm.
It must not have come out of O'Crunch.
No. They don't, they don't, they don't have any more recorded minus crushed anymore.
All right.
So.
Anything else?
In the short term, though, it's going to knock the hump off so I don't take out my catalytic converters. I mean, it's just a backhoe.
I would think I can get you guys a scope of work and estimate pretty easy. We can just have them do a fix for this winter on those two and this scope of work. Well, but I don't want to just come and guess.
Yeah.
I mean, anybody could, you know.
But.
So I'm thinking.
Go up there and back.
So we get.
I don't know.
I have a proposal at the next meeting and approve it. It could be done pretty quick, right?
No, nothing happens with these engineers for months.
That's not true. They work very hard.
Whenever we want to request for something or we want a project done, it's months until it comes back.
And if we have to have a bid process.
Yeah, they're doing like fifteen things for us right now, so I don't like the pad mouth thing.
Saying they're not doing their job, just saying like just like the weller fix. That was a year ago. We're still waiting for an engineer to talk about the fixes and.
Springboard project. That's not just one individual thing.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying an engineer thing doesn't come back in a month. It doesn't come back usually in two weeks.
I wonder.
Quite a while.
I wonder if we could get a load of inch and a half and tracks. Tracks spread that deal down through there. Maybe two loads.
To the point, oh, let's see what he comes back with first before we waste any money. I mean, that might be the stopgap for the winter.
Yeah.
Put some coarser stuff down. Kind of raise, they raise up the tracks maybe where they can get in and out.
Yeah.
Just on that steep portion, probably. I mean, we would do up on top.
Right.
I just don't want to bottom out anymore.
But to be very careful about requesting things for us personally.
Oh, yeah, and then ask the direct.
That's what I'm basically, I'm just looking for a policy. If I have to do it myself, I'll do it, but I don't want to wait.
There isn't.
Talking about it for another six months. That's all I'm getting at. If we can come up with a policy, black and white, either the homeowner's going to do it or the city's going to respond. That's kind of what I was hoping we would come to a conclusion.
Kind of sounds like the city, like the city is going to take it on.
Okay, and I kind of get from J R, if we, the city said, yeah, you can put rock down, he'd buy a load of rock. And fix the problem, but.
Well, nothing's a fix.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Fixes the problem for him for right now.
But we don't have that policy in place, so.
Right, well, we'd have to.
We're moving, we're moving to get there, though.
Yeah.
What we just agreed on.
We had a, we're starting tonight with our workshop. This is a workshop. We can't set policy in a workshop.
No, I know. I know. I just.
And we need to cross our teeth, cover our eyes. We're going to make sure we're thinking it all through. Takes time. People sit. About the rest of you, but it's got to bounce around in the hall spot up here for a while and think and flesh it all out.
Yeah.
Maybe there's other areas that people complain about. I don't know.
Well, that's like, yeah, these examples that we brought up.
Yeah.
Either they fit or they don't, or. We go condition based.
Yeah.
That solves a lot of it right there. If it's serving, if it's serving the purpose.
Right.
What are you going to complain about?
Right.
Well, then when those ones have issues, they just call and say, hey, there's an issue in this alley. City says, yes, we maintain it. We'll send somebody else.
Yeah, right.
Doesn't mean we have to fix it in thirty days. It means we need to say, oh, this is now at a worse condition. You need to put it in the next budget or do whatever and you figure it out from there.
Yeah, and that's adopting into our street plan.
Right.
Be looking at them maybe a little differently.
Well, and if you guys kind of make a.
They don't go to.
We can expect it, so we can say, oh, in three years, we're going to need to do.
Yeah.
X, Y, Z.
Or you ask, you piggyback them on your grand thing, you know, as a small little, if there's paving to do or chip sealing to do and we're chip sealing other streets. Then you piggyback one alley a year or two alleys a year as you can afford out of the streets fund to do the surface condition.
And I guess the bottom line is when we get the street, regardless, alley, whatever, if it gets to impassable. Or we're damaging, that's a different, that's a different level. That should then spur us.
Yeah.
To, okay, we got to do more of an emergency action at that point.
Yeah. Because I think we act like.
Four streets.
For this winter, those, those two up there and potentially the one down on the flat are in like an emergency. Address it somewhat before we get into the heavy season. We're going to do something and then we're going to put a policy in place and do the bigger fix in the construction season.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll get to Robert tomorrow.
Okay. Well, during the meeting at seven fifty, meeting adjourned.
Good meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Hello, good.